Thank you very much, Father God. We thank you so much for our opportunity to live and see the day. So grateful, and I just thank you for it. I'm mayor and I'm councilman. I thank you all for our administration. In every department, thank you for everything you do. It's been a part of your work this time of the coming night. And we like you, continue to bless us, and give us the wisdom that we need you. Continue to make the city a good place for you. Will you thank me with praise? And just say we thank you.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four, recognition and presentation. We've got two from the Perry Police Department. Chief Lynn.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, with your permission, we would like to introduce Mr. Phil Jackson, sir.
Yes.
And, uh, so Ryan Hicks, will you come forward please? We need to introduce you to the mayor council. Uh, this is Ryan Hicks. He graduated from the community party to the [inaudible]. So he's been with us probably a little over three months now, but he's been paying for some time. He's one of the office's mayors, uh, Houston County High graduate. Uh, he's, uh, he's got his bachelor's degree in criminal justice from, uh, the Georgia State. And, uh, a significant top academic honors in the academy. But while he's dealing with all that, he also had a new addition to the family. She was born after he started at Kent. So they're dealing with a lot of changes right now, addition to him, about starting to still train on earth. Two nations. So we're happy to have, uh, Ryan. And Ryan, I know you've got some family there if you want to introduce them to us.
Uh, this is my wife Elena and my little girl, Melody. Also got my mom, Brenda. Um, my dad, Scott, my grandpa, Emory, and my sister, Caitlin, and my brother-in-law, Josh. And according to my brother, Tony, we're already [inaudible].
Officer Hicks, I want to take this opportunity to thank you for making the conscious decision to go to work for the City of Perry. And obviously, they're better police department than you are for anybody. These men and women that you're going to be working with are top knowledge. They are smart, they understand what they do, why they do it, and where they do it, and they have their corporate memory. That'll help you, um, learn how to do your job the most effective way. Lean on them, because they're gonna lean on you from that standpoint. Thank you for deciding to go into that line of work. It is getting harder and harder for people to pull, pardon the expression, pull that trigger. Such a line of work, probably takes a special person, not only for the police department, but the fire department as well, and a desire to make that a career. And we're looking forward for the next thirty-nine, thirty-nine years or so. I'll put in here these men and women. Congratulations, welcome to the City of Perry, welcome to Perry Police Department.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Officer Ava Fith.
Right here. Come on, come forward, please, ma'am. Ava, this is Mayor Council. Ava started, uh, duty last week, so she's been here a week now, I guess. And, um, she, let me talk about her education right now. She's got her education, I would say. She's got bachelor's in legal studies, a master's in criminal justice with a dual specialization in forensic, I have to read this. Forensic science and forensic psychology. And she's a doctoral candidate for PhD in public service. She's working on that now, in a [inaudible]. Uh, she's, uh, previously worked with Maclay PD, and then after consolidation, was a Pitt County deputy. After, she moved and worked for the GBI, the Medical Legal Death Investigation Bureau, the medical examiner. That was causing a little problem with trying to get her fourth word done, so she took a job, uh, in law firm justice and forensic investigations, University of Wisconsin, Platteville. And then came back to Georgia, where her husband was Pitt County deputy for the last eight years. And went to work for Soonville, and then later, lucky enough, hired her away from Soonville. She comes through us with a lot of education, a fair amount of experience, and absolutely had her, had her form, I think, in here.
Chief, can you have any, give me [inaudible].
Yeah, I see. Introduce him, or you'll hear the rest. Yeah.
Again, I want to tell you similar things that I've already talked to Officer Hicks about. Thank you for making the conscious decision to decide to go work for, pardon me, sir, the best police department. And we have room for one more. Chief, you so decided, but, um, in all honesty, you did come with experience, a lot of education background. You can teach these men and women something, so please do, from that standpoint. That is critical, in knowing what you have to learn to do it, and when to do it. And you will lean on them, and they're gonna lean on you, from that standpoint. They're your family, and you're now part of our family. Thank you for that decision. Thank you for your welcome to the City of Perry, and you're welcome anytime you'd like to. Please, no, and, or by any time, just don't take her back. Congratulations for working in the City of Perry, the City of Perry Police Department.
Thank you.
Just there, I need your assistance out front with this one. Sergeant Hamsley, will you come forward, please? So tonight, we're gonna recognize Sergeant Michael Hamsley, we'll be calling him Mike. And I didn't get a bio on purpose, because, you know, he's been doing this for forty years. Now I'm gonna go home sunburned tonight. Well, it just suffice to say that Mike's been an extremely loyal member of Perry Police Department for a very long time. And I'm happy to have him, because he's been doing a little bit more than I am, which is good, to have, uh, somebody around that, that really knows the rock. And, uh, Mike does a great job for us as our terminal agency coordinator, which is a very important position, because that keeps us straight. You know, you talk about the city attorney keeping you out of jail, well, he keeps me out of jail from violating the federal crime information laws and the national crime information laws. He handles all of that, all the background checks that are done, uh, by the city for various customers, for medical center, for education. Literally thousands of those during the course of the year, he handles all of that. There's never a hiccup in that. And, uh, the family's had some medical issues here recently. Mike, you know, he took care of that family first, but never noticed it on the job. Same level-headed, easygoing guy that he always was, always has been. But, so, there's no forty-year ban for the city. I mean, I'm not sure why. So we thought about giving him eight fives, or a thirty-five and five. He already had the thirty. So we did a plaque. And, and Mike, you can hang it, you wear it around your neck if you want.
How are you?
You can hang it anywhere you want to. Uh, but it says Sergeant Michael Hamsley, June 3rd, 1978 to June 3rd, 2018. Congratulations for forty years of service in the citizens of Perry, uh, Perry Police Department. And we give this to you, helping you find a place of honor. This is not a retirement, though. He's not leaving, he's just, he's gonna start before he wants. I really appreciate that. Can you please come forward? Nobody makes a four-year career without a lot of support, okay? And we know that you give Mike a lot of support. And not only that, you could have been thinking, it's either send him or bring him to us, which is always appreciated. But, uh, so we always like to recognize this spouse, and so we've got some flowers in your honor. Good to have you here, and the players got some stuff to say.
First of all, thank you for your years of service. And thank you for tolerating those years of service, from that standpoint. The corporate memory I spoke about is right there. And all of these officers, if you learn from them, you've done a very good job of imparting that wisdom, and we hope you continue to do it. We'll get you a forty-five, fifty, fifty-five if you want. We do appreciate that, and have done a fantastic job, having put the City of Perry for a long time up in the [inaudible]. And it shows, it shows, I'm sure, the daily enthusiasm and the initiative that you have taken. I do have a little gift certificate for, um, for you to, to eat somewhere, but I'm not gonna give it to you. I wanna make sure that you have the [inaudible]. I think you can tell I'm starving [inaudible]. But I do appreciate, I appreciate you, appreciate you pretty well, for the effort that y'all can afford and continue to do on a daily basis to keep Perry, so. Thank you very much. Appreciate you, congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
I'd like to just say something, that it's a privilege to work in this town, it always has been. It is a good town with good people, and we want to see it grow and prosper. But one of the things that's really important to me is what they do before this meeting. They say a prayer, and they say that with. So we always, we want to remember the good Lord, because, I don't say, these folks, they've been a lot to me, and I hope that they say a prayer before they get out in their car, because they, they need it. And so I, I pray that they do. I want you and the city leaders to know that, that I look at this important, so I want to thank y'all for that. Thank you, I appreciate that. I'm going.
This is a different subject. You may remember that we recognized you for saving the city some money at our last meeting. And what happened was, if you weren't here, uh, Mike is responsible for paying bills for prisoners and that type of stuff. And we had a couple that had to go in for some, for something, to the hospital, and he noticed that the charges from the hospital were, I won't say they're high, but they were there. He told you, or found out, that there was a way for that to be cut, and, and he did that, and brought it to the hospital retention, and it ended up saving the City of Perry nearly six thousand dollars. We have a program within the City of Perry that even wanted to take the initiative in order to save, uh, the citizen money through, uh, any types of initiatives, or different ways of doing things, or in this particular case, a specific example, but this will not only save the City of Perry money in this instance, but going forward. So it's gonna be a continuous thing. Because of that program, it is my privilege and honor to present you a check of one thousand dollars. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Thank you, everybody, appreciate you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Chief. And Mike, when the whole [inaudible].
Item five, citizen's [inaudible]. Citizen wishes to address council on any matter of this study. Thank you. Item six is the review of minutes. Item six, say, council, for your consideration, you have been provided the minutes for the June 4th, 2018 work session, the June 5th, 2018 recouncil meeting, and the June 5th, 2018 council meeting. At this time, council, I want to entertain a motion that we approve these minutes as presented. Motion and a second for any additions, changes, or additions or discussion regarding these minutes. Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. All is opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item seven is old business. Seven A, ordinances for a second reading and adoption. Item seven A one is the second reading of a text amendment for section one through thirteen definitions and section four dash one table of uses as it pertains to personal care homes. Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, this is the second reading of an ordinance to make some modifications to the land management ordinance. Uh, we are updating the definition of family personal care home to reflect the current building code requirement of a five-person limit to be classified as residential. We are also proposing to, um, tie together the group personal care and congregate personal care definitions into one, and that's congregate personal care, and that would be any facility that provides care to more than five persons in a single location. Um, we are also modifying the, um, the table of uses to, uh, to recognize where these facilities are located, and the family personal care home will be permitted by right wherever single-family detached residential uses are permitted. The congregate personal care facility, uh, personal care home will be by right in the office commercial district, the institutional districts, the general commercial district, and the mixed-use center district, and also by special exception in the phone-form-based residential districts.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Does any member of council have any questions, Mr. Wood, regarding this item? Hearing none, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we adopt this text amendment ordinance for section one through thirteen definitions and section four dash one table of uses pertaining to personal care homes as described. That is a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Item seven A two is the second reading of an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2019 operating budgets of the City of Perry. Mr. Gilmore.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor and council, in your package, you have the proposed FY19 operating budget, which has the original recommendations, plus incorporating certain requests that came up through your hearings, which we would recommend to you, Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Does any member of council have any questions, Mr. Gilmore, regarding the budget for fiscal year 2019? Hearing none, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we adopt the ordinance that will adopt the fiscal year 2019 operating budget for the City of Perry as described. That is a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item eight is any other old business. Item eight A is any other old business from the mayor, or I have none. Item eight B is any other old business from council members, Mr. Allen Grace. Ms. Walker.
No, sir.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Thank you. Item eight C is any other old business from the city manager, Mr. Gilmore.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item eight D is any other old business from the assistant city manager, Mr. Smith.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item eight D is any other old business from the city attorney, Ms. Waters.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item nine is new business. Now, they are matters that were referred from last night's, the June 18th, 2018 work session, and today's, June 19th, 2018, recouncil meeting. Mr. Gilmore, is any of last night's work session, the need of attention?
Yes, sir.
And is it coming up? Item nine A one is a resolution adopting an annexation policy, Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you. Mayor, mayor and council, at your last work session, uh, we discussed the need for an annexation policy for the city. Uh, that was provided to you at your work session yesterday as a document, and we are recommending to you to adopt the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Does any member of council have any questions regarding this resolution? Hearing none, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we adopt the annexation policy resolution as described. Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item nine A two is the first reading of an ordinance establishing a restaurant district. Mr. Smith.
Mr. Mayor. Mayor and council. Uh, you have before you an ordinance and a district map of the proposed restaurant district. Uh, as we had discussed, essentially what this ordinance would allow is open container within the district, um, seven days a week from eleven AM to midnight. Uh, the beverages can only be purchased from licensed downtown vendors, and they can only be purchased one at a time. It must be a sixteen-ounce or less plastic cup. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, council? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilmore, is this the first reading, or can we take action on this, or wait for the second?
We can wait until the second.
Item nine B is the order of bids. Item nine D one is bid number twenty eighteen dash forty-two for the Davis Farm Station Annex. Chief Parker.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, uh, you have there in your board pack, the information there for the, uh, what we call the Davis Farm Annex, which is a metal storage building on a concrete pad to be built behind the Davis Farm Station, or Farm Station Number Two. We did receive three bids for the, uh, for the property, or for the building out there, and Paris Construction was the low bid, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars for the base price, plus an eighteen thousand dollar contingency fund was recommended for a total construction project of three hundred and forty-six thousand, six hundred dollars. Again, they were the low bid, and staff recommends approval of that bid.
Thank you, chief. Does any member of council have any questions regarding this item? Hearing none, raise on the department's recommendation, I will entertain a motion that we award the bid in the amount of three hundred and forty-six thousand, six hundred dollars for Paris Construction Group as requested. Still a move?
Second.
Is a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, chief. Item nine B two is bid number two thousand eighteen dash forty-three, Crossroads Park, Legacy Park, and Heritage Park. Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you. Mayor, mayor and council, on your board pack, you have the bid results for this project, there was one bidder. Unfortunately, with the price of the bids that came in, the administration is recommending that you reject the bid, because it is beyond the budget on what we have. If you reject this bid, we will go back to the drawing board, we're gonna continue on with the project, but they'll have to be revised with different [inaudible].
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Does any member of council have any questions, Mr. Gilmore, regarding this item? Hearing none, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we reject the bids regarding this project as described. That is a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item nine C is resolutions for consideration and adoption. Nine C one is a resolution establishing the fiscal year 2019 fee schedule. Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you. Mayor, mayor and council, in your package, you have a resolution which adjusts our fee schedule. Uh, the fee schedule adjustments are based on the budget that you just adopted. This is a standard process that you do each year, we recommend to, in fiscal year, excuse me, we recommend to you to adopt.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Does any member of council have any questions regarding this item? Hearing none, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we adopt the resolution establishing the fiscal year 2019 fee schedule as described. That is a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item nine D is a special event application. City of Perry is hosting a Perry Water Battle at Roger Park, Saturday, thirty June, twenty eighteen, at one PM, at two thirty. Mr. Smith.
Mr. Mayor. Uh, mayor and council, the city will be hosting our annual community water battle on June thirtieth, from one o'clock to two thirty, at Roger Park. Um, something that we have traditionally done, uh, for the past, what, three years now, uh, where it's, it's a free event. Community come out, kids can come out, and city staff will have everything set up, ready to go for a fun time, including fire trucks and police vehicles, I think, participating this year, slip and slide, um, you know, all that type of stuff, designed to, you know, get wet and, and get out of heat as much as possible. Uh, and then we'll be following up the event with a cookout, with hamburgers and hot dogs for the participants. Um, it's typically a great community event, again, free, um, and all are welcome. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, council? Hearing none, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve the special event application for the Perry Water Battle as described. That is a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item ten is the old business, and the [inaudible] agenda, ten A, ordinances for a first reading and introduction. Ten A one is the first reading of an ordinance amending the Perry Code by deleting section fifteen dash thirty-four in its entirety and adding a new section fifteen dash thirty-four, when tax due and paid, the effect of transacting business when delinquent. Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, in your packet is an ordinance for first reading, which would amend our code by changing the due date for business licenses from December thirty-first to July first. And what this does is the license will still remain in effect for the year, but it spreads out the workload, and should be more cost-effective for the city, beneficial for businesses as well.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Any member of council have any questions regarding this item? Since this is a first reading and introduction, no actions required at this time by council. Item ten B, are resolutions for consideration and adoption. Ten B one is a resolution authorizing the city attorney to proceed with condemnation of property by declaration of taking method. Mr. Gilmore.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. And you may remember, we discussed this at the recouncil, and the recommendation from the administration and the city attorney's office is to table this resolution.
After hearing the conversations that you have had, and the recommendation from staff and, uh, the city attorney's office, council, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we table this item as described. That is a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item eleven are council member items. Ms. Allen Grace. Ms. Walker.
No, sir.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes, sir.
Mr. King. Thank you. Mr. Gilmore.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I do have one item for y'all. Uh, we mentioned the community water battle on Saturday, June thirtieth. Well, this Saturday, June twenty-third, uh, we'll be having our first Saturday cinema event, uh, for the Saturday cinema series that we'll be doing through October. Uh, this event takes place at Roger Park, and starts at seven o'clock, and we'll be showing Coco, which is apparently a very popular Disney flick now. Uh, the movie will begin at sunset, and of course, this is weather permitting. Uh, but again, you know, free event, all are welcome, hope to see a bunch of people out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Waters, do you have anything for us?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Item twelve, department head items, from the office of the city clerk, Ms. Warren. Thank you. From the Department of Finance and Administration, Mr. King.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. From community development, Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Do you have anything from economic development?
No, sir.
Thank you. From, uh, leisure services, Mr. Dyke. Thank you. Perry Police Department, Chief Lynn.
Nothing to watch, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Fire and emergency services, Chief Parker.
Nothing to watch, sir.
Thank you. Item thirteen are general public items. Is there any member of the general public, or we should still address council at this time? Please state your name and address.
Mayor Garland McWendell, and I'm at nine hundred Carroll Street. On behalf of the team, I want to make sure that y'all all have this Sunday on your calendar. I know that much of, uh, council and department heads can stand, and we regret that we always conflict with that, but the Independence Parade gets off down town from the library at six PM. It will end at the fairgrounds, um, seven p.m. is our food store for the Freedom fireworks this year. We do have philosophy for our live-in entertainment, standard kids' zone, picnic, family time, and the Silver Wings will schedule to jump and bring down the flag again. Our two grand marshals for the parade this year are Emory Wilson and Carol Underwood. So if you know those two, you'll, um, feel a great attitude to men who have served our country. Then the following Thursday, the twenty-eighth, is our business after hours, and it is at one of our newer businesses in Haynesville. Remember, it's Bo Decker Bridge, who has been very successful, her new location, five thirty to seven. I'm sure she'll be delighted with the treats that she has planned, and something up to [inaudible].
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Williams. What do you, anyone else like to address, Carol?
I'm actually, yes, I just wanted to let y'all know, Kelly Williams, three three nine, Corbin Avenue, Manhattan. Um, but anyways, I was just gonna let y'all know, Com South was, is sponsoring an event called Summer Jam. I don't know if anyone in here [inaudible]. I know some people were getting hotels in Perry, and we're going to be camping in the Perry area, which while you certainly can still stay in nice Perry hotels and go camping in Perry, they have moved the concert to the Macon Centralplex due to the extreme heat wave coming. So, I'm just trying to get that out there because they just made that change this week.
Thank you, Mayor. Would anyone else like to address counsel? Thank you.
Want to come back, going back to the budget? Mr. Gilmore, am I correct that there is no increase in the mortgage rate based upon that you have reported?
It is current.
Oh, I just want to clarify, of course not, you have an increase in our mortgage.
Thank you, appreciate it. Item fourteen are mayor items. Twice a year, the Georgia Municipal Association provides training opportunities for mayors and councils and department heads. And the last weekend in January is called Mayor's Day in Atlanta, where we have opportunities to get continuing education credits. And this coming weekend, the Georgia Municipal Association is sponsoring their annual meeting in Savannah. I really wish they'd switched those because of the weather, because it's extremely hot and mud, and it's not at this time of year. However, we do go, we do go to the classes, and just as importantly, we associate with other elected officials, other department heads, city attorneys, and then the teachers that they come in are second to none. The information that we gather and glean is invaluable, and we have found over the years, since we have been going, that we impart as much as we receive. There are other cities that are emulating a lot of the things that we do, which is good, and when we have some issues, we talk to them about how they have been addressed. So, it is a good conference all the way around. And it does conflict. I wish we could figure out a way to do that, but I'll be coming back for the Fourth of July parade. That's this coming weekend. Just for information, normally we have the Walk with Mayor and Council on the Fourth Tuesday, we've made the decision, since it is next Tuesday to cancel that, we will do it again next month. Ms. Walker, I know you're looking forward to it.
Well, you know, I would drive in that from Savannah.
Our next meeting is going to be in July. July the 2nd is the first Monday for a work session. July the 3rd is the pre-counsel council meeting. This is the summer vacation time, please be careful. There are multiple people going multiple places at multiple speeds, and a lot of them are in the way, from that standpoint. I believe that is all I have from that standpoint. And speaking of driving, please slower traffic, keep riding. Thank you for your interest and participation. We stand adjourned.